I know. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I am now calling this meeting to order. May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? We are now calling the Leon County Commission Meeting for October 2024 to order. It's a delight to see all of you all here. Thank you all for being here, and we will get started. Commissioners, we have Commissioner Maddox on the phone. He would like to appear at this meeting by phone. He has the nature of an emergency, so I'd like to entertain a motion for him to appear by phone.
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and properly second that Commissioner Maddox be allowed to appear by phone. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? The motion carries with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Minor to introduce our invoker and then to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, I'm proud to introduce Trinity Whitley, Associate Pastor of Faith Presbyterian Church. I've known Associate Pastor Whitley for many years. Not only is she an excellent pastor at faith, but she's also very committed to serving this community. She's a member of the governing body for the Council on the Status of Men and Boys. She's a member of this year's Leadership Tallahassee Class 42, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And she's also been a resident of Tallahassee for 12 years, serving for seven years as one of the pastors at Faith Presbyterian. Associate Pastor Whitley, thank you for your leadership and for your service to the people of Leon County. We're honored to have you with us today. Commissioners and to everyone else here, please give a warm welcome to Associate Pastor Trinity Whitley.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Thank you, Chair Cummings, and it is delightful to be with you all this afternoon. I would love to open us up with a word of prayer. I'm going to pray in my tradition, which is in the Christian tradition, but I encourage you to center yourself in whatever faith tradition feels right for you. Loving and gracious God, we gather today in the spirit of unity and service, recognizing that the strength of our community is from the leadership that guides us forward. As we begin this meeting, we hold in our hearts all those who are recovering from Hurricane Helene, the individuals, families, and first responders who are working tirelessly to rebuild their lives and homes. We pray a special prayer for our neighbors in Taylor County. May they find resilience, hope, and support through the compassion of their neighbors and the resources of this community. We give thanks for our local leaders, especially the members of this commission, for their dedication to public service and their commitment to the well-being of all who call Leon County home. May they be guided by wisdom, justice, and a spirit of collaboration as they make decisions that impact the common good. In this season of life where divisions run rampant, let us be reminded that we are stronger together. May we set aside differences and find common ground, focusing on what unites us as a diverse, yet interconnected, community. May our conversations be filled with respect and our actions rooted in a desire to uplift every resident. Let this meeting be a place where solutions are born from cooperation, where the voices of all are heard, and where we can work hand in hand to build a future that is inclusive, sustainable, and just. We pray this with gratitude and humility, asking for guidance, courage, and unity in the work that lies ahead. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor, and we certainly want to thank Pastor Whitley for that very appropriate invocation. Commissioners, we have proclamations, and we have two proclamations that have been pulled, postponed for a later date. That's a proclamation recognizing Hindview Elementary, Bond Elementary, and Nims Middle School for successfully achieving A/B school grades for 2024 by Commissioner Maddox, and also the proclamation recognizing Bishop Julius Smith Callister, who was elected Bishop of Bethel AME Church. And that will be done at a later time. So right now, I'd like to call on Commissioner O'Keefe, if you will, to present your proclamation recognizing Chair's Little League All-Star Baseball Team as runner-up at the state championship.
Come on up, everybody. If y'all want to gather up over here, Coach, if you want to hang with me. All right. This is fun for me because, based on my athletic ability, it's the closest I will ever get to a state championship. First, I want to recognize everybody, when I call your name, just raise your hands. Coach Brian Garber, Alex McGee, A.J. Simpson, Brooke Akos, Bryce Garber, Cole Duncan, Connor Tigarina, Cooper Bishop, Dresden Gilbert, J.D. Bellflower, Logan Falk, Michael Volpe, and Nicholas Volpe. All right. Whereas, in June 2024, the Chair's Little League All-Stars team clinched the District 20 Championship title by defeating Fort Braden. And whereas, by becoming District 20 Champions, the Chair's Little League All-Stars team earned a spot in the sectional tournament, defeating Niceville. And whereas, by becoming the Section 1 Champions, the Chair's Little League All-Stars team earned a spot in the state tournament for the third consecutive season. And whereas, the Chair's Little League All-Stars team took on Lake Mary Little League in the state championship game, becoming the first Chair's team to play in the state championship game. And whereas, leading hitters for the All-Stars were Connor Tigarina and Bryce Garber, batting .562, Cooper Bishop, batting .526, and Logan Falk, batting .478. And whereas, leading pitchers for the All-Stars were Connor Tigarina, Michael Volpe, Nicholas Volpe, and Cooper Bishop. And whereas, Michael and Nicholas Volpe were the winning pitchers in the state tournament, Cooper Bishop held Lake Mary in check for a little over four innings. And whereas, the nucleus of this team goes back to 2021 with six players, and 2022 with eight players. 2022 is the first year this group went to the state tournament and continued this quest all the way to 2024. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County that we celebrate and honor the achievements of the 2024 Chair's Little League All-Stars Baseball Team and congratulate them for making it all the way to the state championship game into Funiac Springs, dated this 8th day of October 2024, signed by the Chair, Commissioners, and County Administrator. How about if we have the team line up in front of the dais? And then, if all the commissioners want to join? Oh, and anyone who makes some comment?
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, and I recognize a lot of you guys and a lot of you coaches, and I just want you guys to know, we're super proud of you. You represent Tallahassee so well. We know you love that Chairs Park over there, that beautiful county facility, but I just want to let you know, next week, we're breaking ground on a Northeast Park, and we will have a Northeast Little League team to compete with these great Chairs teams going forward. But we're super proud of you guys, so happy for you. You represented us so well, and you guys, you don't realize this, but you represent your families, you represent your neighborhoods and your teams, but you really represent Leon County and Tallahassee, and we just could not be more proud of you. You all played the winners, didn't you? The ultimate eventual winners, and played them well, from what I understand. So we do good baseball here in Leon County, and just want to commend you guys. Thank you for showing up and all you represent.
Any other commissioners?
Oh, we'll stand there.
Would you like your stool here? Sorry. If we can have a few more of you all going on that side, just to even it out. Yeah, that's good. Yeah, you can stay there.
Yeah, stay there, Cole.
See you, everybody. Okay. Everyone, let's take a look at this camera. Few more pictures going on. Thank you all.
Next, we'll call on Commissioner O'Keefe to present a proclamation recognizing the St. Augustine Plantation Assisted Living Facility for efforts to ensure the safety of residents after the May 10th tornado. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you very much. Here we have with us Megan Griffin, Executive Director, Nicole German, Marketing Director, and Tania Anthony, Director of Business Administration from the St. Augustine Plantation Senior Living Community. Whereas, on May 10th, 2024, a series of three devastating tornadoes touched down in Leon County, causing millions of dollars in damage to homes, businesses, government buildings, and institutions of higher education. And whereas, among the many locations that sustained damage was the St. Augustine Plantation Senior Living Community, home to 103 residents in both their memory care and assisted living units. And whereas tornado warnings, as tornado warnings were being issued by the National Weather Service, night shift team members began following tornado drill protocols, escorting residents from their beds and apartments to a designated safe area in the memory care building. And whereas, three residents' beds that were occupied only moments before had trees and debris covering where the residents had been sleeping. And whereas, in the hours after the storm, employees who weren't on the schedule for that day came to assist, climbing over downed trees and debris to get residents to safety and to ensure a sense of routine, which is especially important for memory care residents. And whereas, when all totaled, the St. Augustine Plantation sustained more than $3 million in damage to their facility, with significant roof damage to their memory care unit and trees hitting an above-ground water main, leading to severe flooding inside the unit. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County honor and recognize the bravery of both the staff and the residents of the St. Augustine Plantation Senior Living Community for their quick and decisive actions on May 10th, 2024, which literally saved the lives of many at their facility, dated this 8th day of October 2024, signed by the Chair, Commissioners, and the County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the assisted living and the memory care community of St. Augustine Plantation. We hear so many times in the news, you know, very negative outcomes, you know, when disasters hit, and we had our emergency plan in place, and I'm very thankful for the staff that put the residents above themselves, and we were able to safely evacuate 27 residents from a very, very dangerous and difficult situation to our assisted living to safety. And on behalf of all the staff who came and helped and was there on that day, thank you for the proclamation. It really means a lot.
Only little kids get to go all the way around the dais. All right. Congratulations, and thank you. I'll let everyone know I want to move in where y'all are.
Now, Commissioner Minor will have a proclamation recognizing Ms. Barbara Boone.
Madam Chair, as a member of Leadership Tallahassee Class 26, it is my distinct honor to present this next proclamation. You know, Tallahassee has its share of great community leaders, those who help move Tallahassee and Leon County forward in some way. In many cases, though, these true leaders ruffle a few feathers along the way. Ms. Barbara Boone, however, is one of those people who seems to be universally loved by everyone who knows her. Yes, yes. And Madam Chair, Commissioners, as you can see, some of her fans are here today. These are Anor cousin. These are LT alumni, Leadership Tallahassee Chamber coworkers, and many others who, like me, have been inspired by Barbara's leadership. Thank you all very much for being here. Would you all please stand? Now, you know, I think there were a couple people that maybe didn't come for Barbara Boone, but they decided to come up anyway, right? You know who you are. Listen, I think this incredible support is because Barbara, everything that she does, everything that she does is for the service of others, right? It's to help other people. In fact, as Tallahassee Magazine has said, Barbara Boone is a leader of leaders. Barbara, Barbie Morrow from LT 28, the second best class, she put it well, saying that Barbara's one of those rare humans who can simultaneously see your potential, celebrate your strengths, and then discuss your opportunity for improvement, and you feel validated the entire time. Now, for anyone watching the proceeding tonight, if you haven't yet had a chance to join the Leadership Tallahassee class, I hope you'll choose to apply. It's a year-long, life-changing experience that helps you become a better leader. It helps you appreciate the richness of our community, and it helps you make some lifelong friends. As for this proclamation, I want to make sure we give credit where credit is due. A while back, Ms. Virginia Glass, who by herself is an incredibly great community leader, yes, she is. She reached out to me and she said, you know, the county commissioner should honor Barbara Boone for her outstanding service to this community. And I just want to say, truer words were never spoken, Virginia. Thank you very much. Thank you. And now, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Barbara Boone grew up as one of seven children in a tight-knit family in Neptune Beach, Florida. And whereas, after graduating from Florida State University with a bachelor's degree in social work, Ms. Boone worked in the Duval County School System, connecting parents with programs for children with disabilities. And whereas, after shifting her focus toward parenting her three boys, Ms. Boone was approached by Leadership Jacksonville to work part-time. And whereas, Ms. Boone graduated from Leadership Jacksonville and thereafter became the Associate Director of that organization. And whereas, Ms. Boone and her family relocated to the Tallahassee area in 1999, and Ms. Boone was hired by the Tallahassee Chamber to direct its Leadership Tallahassee program. And whereas, Ms. Boone has served for the past 25 years as the Executive Director of the Leadership Tallahassee program and is serving her 18th year as a Vice President of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce. And whereas, Ms. Boone is the driving force behind Leadership Tallahassee, a year-long program that prepares participants for community leadership through leadership service. The program is celebrated in its 42nd class this year. Over 1,800 people have graduated from Leadership Tallahassee since its inception in 1983, and around 1,000 have participated since Ms. Boone arrived, starting with Class 17. And whereas, another achievement of Ms. Boone's was the creation of Youth Leadership Tallahassee, a program that brings together a diverse group of high school juniors from public and private schools in Tallahassee who have demonstrated leadership potential. Youth Leadership Tallahassee prepares them to become ethical leaders committed to active community involvement. Almost done. Whereas, Ms. Boone was named one of Tallahassee's 25 Women You Need to Know for 2021, was deemed a Leader of Leaders by Tallahassee Magazine in 2023, and was awarded the 2023 Unsung Shiro Award by the Oasis Center for Women and Girls. And whereas, Ms. Boone's 25 years of servant leadership and commitment to empowering others has made her one of Leon County's most beloved community leaders. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County that to date, we recognize October 8th, 2024, as Barbara Boone Day. In recognition of Ms. Boone's enduring contribution to the people of Leon County and for her dedication to community empowerment and leadership, dated this 8th day of October 2024, signed by the Chairwoman Carolyn Cummings and the County Commissioners, as well as our County Administrator.
Okay, everybody who knows me knows I do not like public speaking, and they also know that speaking off the cuff can be dangerous for me, so I went ahead and wrote some remarks. But now that I see this crowd here, I got to, there's so many people I have to thank that I can't thank you all. But I'm going to thank a few. I'm going to make an attempt. So special greetings to our distinguished elected officials, especially Commissioner Minor, LT 26, the ever-gracious Virginia Glass, LT 21, Sue Dick, I think, is here. She's my boss. She's the Chamber President, LT 16, my colleagues at the Chamber, especially Lily Childery, YLT Director, LT 39. I can do this forever, guys. And then, our newest colleague is Stephanie Love. I also want to recognize the LT Board of Governors who are here, and Elizabeth Calbell Emanuel, LT 31, who's the Chair, and all you LT grads and community members who've honored me by being here, friends, and especially my family, Forrest, Forrest, my son, Forrest, my husband, Forrest, my son, Rachel, my daughter-in-law, Shannon, my daughter-in-law, who may be coming in late, Matthew, my son, who's actually in New Orleans right now, and my baby brother, Philip. So I stand here today, humbled and deeply grateful to God for its guidance and strength and grace in my life. I also want to acknowledge all the individuals who've been working diligently with recovery efforts as a result of Helene and are currently working to prepare for that next hurricane, Milton, bearing down on our state. I can't begin to say how overwhelmed I am right now. To have a day dedicated in my name is something I could never have imagined. Can't wait to tell my sisters. They know, but they don't know. And I stand here with my heart full of gratitude for this honor. I also have to recognize my dear mother, who passed away three weeks ago at the age of 98. She has always been so proud of me, and if she could have, she would have been here. Just want to mention that, and anybody else who made this possible. So I've got to say, this honor is just not about me. It's about the community and its leaders, who represent all the sectors of Tallahassee, Leon County. It represents the shared vision and collective impact that you all have had and will continue have in creating a better future for our community. And again, thank you very much. I'll cherish this moment always, and I'll continue working to live up to the values and hopes that this day represents. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah. We have a comment. Ms. Boone, we have a comment from Commissioner Welch. Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Hey, Ms. Barbara. I want to say thank you. I, you are the personification of Leadership Tallahassee. I mean, if it were a person, and if it were a spirit, it would be you. And I tell people all the time, if they don't like me as a county commissioner, they got to blame you, because Leadership Tallahassee was pivotal in my ability to do this. And really, you are such a behind-the-scenes, you don't like the spotlight, right? And I know, we all know that, and so I imagine this is very awkward for you. And a part of that, you know, is what's so charming about you. And, you know, when I came to Leadership Tallahassee as just a little old school teacher that thought I could do more in the community, you know, you put your hand on my shoulder and said, yeah, you can, you know? So that encouragement and that instilling of belief in yourself, that works for schoolteachers the same way it works for nonprofit executives and government chiefs of staff and business owners and bankers and auditors and everybody across the spectrum. And so I just want to reiterate to you how much I appreciate the role you've played in my journey. I hope every day to make you proud, as I know most of the LT graduates do. And I want to give a shout out to LT 36. All right. Commissioner Minor at LT 26, you know, he's 10 years ahead of me in LT, but the guy looks like he's 10 years younger than me in life. So thank you, Commissioner Minor, for doing this. I think it's great. Thank you, Ms. Glass, for bringing this to our attention, and Barbara, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Any other commissioners? And now, we will have proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Commissioner Proctor has graciously allowed me to present the proclamation, so those of you that are here to receive it, if you will meet me at the podium. Thank you all. This is the proclamation, and it reads, whereas October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas domestic violence affects every person in Leon County, Florida, either as a survivor of domestic violence, as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. And domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups. And whereas domestic violence and intimate partner violence can have lifelong consequences emotionally, mentally, socially, spiritually, and physically. And whereas, although progress has been made toward preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families, there is still a need to
and providing support to survivors and their families, there is still a need to provide resources, education, awareness, and understanding of domestic violence and its causes, and important work remains to be done. And whereas policymakers and communities must work together to transform the conditions that cause domestic violence and support survivor-centered solutions. And whereas this year's National Domestic Violence Awareness Month theme is, and I quote, "Everyone Knows Someone," end quote. It personifies our commitment to serving domestic violence survivors by acknowledging, invigorating, and rededicating ourselves to the goal of eliminating domestic violence for everyone. And whereas the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and the Oasis Center for Women and Girls, and many other community partners, programs, professionals, and advocates of nonviolence have joined together with Refuge House to support each other in our work and to provide Leon County and our citizens with a well-coordinated community response to domestic violence. And whereas during the month of October, the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council and its many partners will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of family violence and increase sensitivity to survivors of family violence, emphasizing the need for citizen involvement in efforts to reduce family violence through public education and changing public attitudes. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby designate the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month in Leon County, Florida, and urge the appropriate recognition thereof. Dated this 8th day of October 2024, signed by all of the Commissioners and attested to by County Administrator Vincent Long. Thank you, congratulations, we appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you so much for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and thank you for all of your support and for every family that it touches and has seen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any comments from the Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor? I was just asking, did any Commissioners have any comments? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much. When domestic violence is such a growing problem, it's something that's important for us that we have such growing support in our community led by all of you, so just thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And now we recognize Commissioner Proctor, who will be presenting a proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening. Madam Chair, on the issue of domestic violence, I guess I'm a survivor. Since Sunday, I've tried to ask my daughter to please leave Orlando, and she was born in the 90s and naturally she knows a lot more than her daddy. And I tried to respect, she's a grown lady, but she was inflicting emotional distress upon her daddy and mama, and domestic violence. And luckily, she, as I was coming here, saying that she was en route to the Orlando Airport, and I said, I don't care where you go, go, you know, go, friends, wherever you go, go, get out of Orlando. But domestic violence works in a number of ways when your daughter don't listen to their daddy and just inflict intentional emotional stress, I just wanted to put that in there. Darryl Parks, come on, man, is that you over there? Come on, man, we glad to see Brother Parks up in here. Wanted this time to ask if Mr. Tim Center would please join. Commissioner Welch's LT class, not all that civil, you noted all that noise out there, right? I know, I saw Sheriff have to go out there and round with that class, that 36. Mr. Center, I appreciate your being here. We have a proclamation to share, we're very proud of the work your agency has done in this community. This proclamation reads, whereas the United States Congress authorized establishment of Community Action Agencies to offer assistance to low-income families across the country, and the Leon County Tallahassee Community Action Program was established in 1965. And whereas the Leon County Tallahassee Community Action Program changed its name to the Capital Area Community Action Agency, Inc., in 1979, and the Capital Area Community Action Agency provides a safety net for deserving families and children, those living in eight counties in the North Florida region. And whereas Community Action provides emergency services, family support services, weatherization assistance, early childhood development services, and programs and assistance to help families become independent of public assistance. And whereas the Community Action is dedicated to people living prosperous lives by helping people and changing lives, the mission is to provide a comprehensive, seamless system of services and resources to reduce the detrimental effects of poverty, empower low-income citizens with skills and motivation to become self-sufficient, and improve the overall quality of their lives in our community. And whereas there are more than 1,000 Community Action Agencies across the country, serving 99% of all American counties, the Capital Area Community Action Agency has a direct and real impact on people's lives in our community. And the Community Area Community Action Agencies, say that real fast, about six times in a row, Community Area Action Agency. Across the country, these agencies have advanced opportunities and strengthened communities by coordinating federal, state, local, and private resources. And every family should have an opportunity for success to live a prosperous life. Our community is better because of the dedicated staff, committed board members, and valuable volunteers and resources made available. Whereas Community Action is recognizing 60 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for our community. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, that we do hereby thank the Capital Area Community Action for 60 years of service and proclaim October 2024 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of the Capital Area Community Action Agency, dated this 8th day of October 2024, signed by all of our Commissioners and by our County Administrator. Mr. Center, we say congratulations, and we do thank you for your services. Bless you.
Madam Chair, and Commissioners, and Commissioner Proctor especially, thank you so much for this honor. For 60 years, more than half a million of our residents and neighbors have been assisted through federal funding, local funding, and more from volunteers and others who have tried to help folks live more prosperous lives, will continue and hope to be here for another 60 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your presentation of the various proclamations to individuals and very deserving groups as well. Now, Mr. County Administrator, we will turn to you for update on Leon County's preparation and response to Hurricane Helene.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I know that we inundate you with information on our storm preparations and our activations, but given the critical importance of our activation to Helene, the FEMA assistance that's currently available in our community, as well as the current forecast track of Hurricane Milton and its expected impacts, I wanted to just very quickly provide the Board with an update, and with that, I'll ask Kevin and Matt to come forward and provide that update.
Good evening, Commissioners, and while I'd hoped to only talk about one storm this evening, unfortunately, I have two to talk about. But I will start with the rundown of Hurricane Helene, a storm that just two weeks ago affected the Big Bend of Florida, made landfall overnight on September 26th in Taylor County with 140 mile-per-hour winds, what appears to be up to 20-foot of storm surge in the area of the Taylor County coast, and seven-foot of storm surge along our west coast of Florida. Here locally in Leon County, we experienced wind gusts up to 70, sorry, 67, that's 67 miles per hour, sustained winds of 42 miles per hour, and rainfall of just over four-and-a-half inches of rain. So a very strong tropical storm did affect our community. Even though the track shifted, we were still severely impacted by this storm. Across the state, damage assessment numbers came in with over 2,000 homes destroyed in Florida by Helene. Over 31,000 homes received major damage, and 15,000 received, over 15,000 received minor damage. This was a very impactful storm for Florida. And if you recall, three weeks ago, when we gave the briefing and I showed the map with all of the watches and warnings that were in effect, all the way up to Tennessee, Helene proved to be that national storm. It was not just a Leon County storm. Particularly in North Carolina, we saw nine to 20 inches of rain across the state and a community. I hope I'm saying this right, it appears it's Bucic, North Carolina, had nearly 31 inches of rain. I don't have a good grasp on all their damage assessment numbers, and honestly, I'm not sure the state of North Carolina has it, it's so widespread, and they will be continuing to work for weeks to get that community to just a stable condition, but a very severe storm. Unfortunately, we are seeing another very severe storm right on the heels of Helene going to affect many of the places that were just affected two weeks ago along the west coast of Florida. Right now, Helene is a 155-mile-per-hour Category 4 storm hurricane. It's expected to maintain that strength as it approaches the west Florida coast. Perhaps it will weaken to a Category 3, a strong Category 3 at 125 miles per hour pre-landfall. That's not going to make a lot of difference in this case, it's still a very large and strong storm. The National Hurricane Center has storm surge warnings up for most of the west coast of Florida, from Yankee Town in Levy County all the way to Flamingo, I believe that's Collier County, with the highest storm surge expected in the Tampa Bay area, 10 to 15 feet above ground level could be expected in coastal areas of Pinellas County and along the internal coastal portions of Tampa Bay, and even down into Charlotte Harbor. Other areas along our coastline of west Florida could see five to 10 feet of storm surge. As far as timing, we may see the tropical storm force winds arrive around 8:00 PM on Wednesday, with the eye of the storm making landfall somewhere in the vicinity of Tampa Bay at sunrise on Thursday morning. This is going to be a tremendous storm. We have watched, as we've done all hurricane season, we've watched for all development, and we're closely coordinating, as always, with the Florida Division of Emergency Management and with our Emergency Management Association to be prepared to provide any level of support that may be needed to our colleagues and friends in central Florida. I think with that, that's the weather overview, and I think Matt has some operational updates.
Thank you, Kevin. Madam Chair, Commissioners, we'll be brief. One of the things that we focus on in emergency management is also helping others, so what I'd like to do is talk about our Helene response, and then how the county is integrated within the state of Florida's emergency response for Milton. So for starters, for Helene, right now, we have ongoing disaster assistance offered by FEMA at disasterassistance.gov, and there have been nearly 2,000 applications for individual assistance from our county residents to the federal government. They'll be dispensing those funds most likely beginning next week to provide critical assistance for our citizens here in Leon County. They've already been dispensing those in the pre-landfall declared area that had been just days before landfall. In addition, we have debris collection operations for Hurricane Helene active and ongoing here in Leon County. Those will be, we're going through Sunday, October 20th. Every address here in Leon County, as you've seen from our communications in our emergency information portal, will be serviced twice for debris collection. Any vegetative debris, no matter the size, brought to the curb will be taken away. We in the unincorporated area will serve all of those addresses, and in addition, the Rural Waste Site Service Centers are operating two each day to collect any amount of vegetative debris that's brought to them. But again, I want to be clear that our attention now is obviously on Milton as we continue the recovery here in Helene at the Emergency Operations Center. From Milton, we're in close coordination with the state of Florida when it comes to direct assistance, that direct assistance is sheltering. 140,000 is the capacity at the state for sheltering outside of coastal storm surge areas. Statewide, 140,000 capacity. Right now, there are 10,000 people in those shelters. We anticipate that that number will rise tomorrow and this evening. Here in Leon County, last evening, we had opened up the North Florida Fairgrounds as an evacuee shelter to assist anyone leaving the forecasted track. They needed a safe place to stay outside of the storm's impacts. We at Leon County are hosting them in partnership with American Red Cross at the North Florida Fairgrounds. We have also notified the state that if the capacity is needed for additional evacuee sheltering, that we will make that ask of the state and make that available. The other things I want to bring up too is that we're doing everything in our power to make hotel availability and coordination, both with Visit Florida and then also the things that we control at the county, such as rescheduling events and other things to make as much hotel availability possible for people seeking evacuation here in Leon County, in addition to mutual aid workers looking for place to respond to Milton after the storm arrives. And then the other component is we've provided critical communications to the St. Petersburg area and that Starlink and other communications so they can remain in contact, even if the impact is significant enough to eliminate their communications. And lastly, like Kevin and I had done over the weekend in Madison County to provide leaf to their Emergency Operations Center, we stand ready to provide personnel assistance to all those affected and to alleviate the burden of the continued response. Because let me be clear, all of those communities that have been affected by Helene are now going to have some impact along the west coast by Milton, and that'll mean that they've been operating at full throttle redlining for north of 16 days, and we at Leon County in the depth of the bench that we have from the pictures you've seen on the screen and what the Administrator continues to impress upon us in emergency management, is ready to serve if asked for by the state of Florida and our peers. So that's just a very quick update of our operations, I'll turn it back over to the County Administrator.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Kevin, just very big kudos to our emergency management team, obviously to all of our operational teams in the field for everything they do. Madam Chair, just a big thank you to you for your continuous availability throughout and for the overwhelming support of the Board. That concludes our update, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator, and I just want to say thank you, Mr. Cavell, Mr. Peters, County Administrator, and all of those that work very hard around the clock doing Hurricane Helene, and we appreciate what you're doing now to coordinate and assist those that are evacuating from down south. Can't say enough about all the services you all provided during that storm and in the aftermath as well. So I will entertain any comments, Commissioner O'Keefe, from the Commissioner, this is then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can't be said enough, thank you, Kevin and Matt, and for all of the public works and emergency staff and communications staff and EMS. emergency staff and communications staff and EMS. Everybody, just thank you for this. It's something that, it's one of the public goods that only local, state, and federal government can provide in these disasters. And the fact that you can do so well does a lot to preserve trust that our citizens have for us. So I can't say thank you enough. And so my next question is a very, very, very small part of that. I want to make sure that the biggest picture is the incredible response. I have had a number of contacts from constituents about debris pickup that, you know, and actually some say they haven't, they didn't get passed, get a pass-through from Debbie in Helene and still now. And so I know that we're using private debris collectors, and there's lots of debris. But I wanted to see how we are able to make sure that our private contractors are catching everybody in their passes.
I'll ask Matt to respond. He's got all the latest.
Sure, happy to. So for starters, again, we follow the Waste Pro Residential Collection model in the unincorporated space. But if anyone is ever missed for any reason, though that's absolutely never the intention, they can contact Public Works, and we will immediately respond and pick up at that location. And we'll make sure that that location is marked, I hate to have to say this, but to make sure that it is never forgotten for any other collection ever again in the future.
Thank you. I hope not too many people heard that, so they don't call to get put on the special note missed list.
That's fine. Thank you. Brent will handle it. It's okay.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, Madam Chair, kudos to our staff, their prep. They did an excellent job. And in our storm management, nothing warmed my heart and fostered our palpitations that on top of the work that I know had been done. I saw the picture of you, Madam Chair, and our County Administrator, meeting Air Force One on the front page and shaking the hand of the President of the United States, who had come to look at storm damages in our region. For some reason, that photo, for me, said it all, that from top to bottom and from bottom to top, we communicate and interact, receive and engage the forces and the sources that can grant relief as well as preparation. I will always cherish that photo, and I think that it was accurate to the larger service delivery that our county does. I think also that this moment speaks to our need for, I think we need some storm centers. And FEMA will not set up operations at the North Florida Fairground. It has visited the fairground in years past, but has left it because the structure is not adequate to withstand hurricanes, not to mention technological deficiencies to accommodate its computers. So we're receiving refugees, if you will, but the fairground is a far cry from being a safe place, as those buildings are very, very light, almost mobile home structures. We do need also for federal lands to be relinquished to Leon County. We need to build emergency centers that FEMA ought to pay for. FEMA has this money, and as opposed to coming around on the back end of a storm, money is ought to be invested by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management. We got, got a million and some acres of land that the federal government, so the dirt don't cost no money at all. But if Florida is going to be the weekly latest hurricane, which is the trend line that meteorologists are talking about nationally, we ought to prepare and do so correctly. And I offer, again, the National Forest, which is the people of United States land, and we need it. Certainly, this says one other thing to me, Commissioners. Our legislature ought to come up with a hotel reduction in a hotel storm rate. And the price of tickets to leave Orlando's airport this afternoon to go to Atlanta instead of coming down is, is gone, I think it's gone up. And for people who are evacuating, and my understanding is that our hotels are pretty, pretty tight, it's just people with lots of capital. It reminds you of Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans, and those who could, and were, could leave, and those who were stranded and were left, and possibly come Friday morning or Thursday afternoon, the people who may well be all the dead folk is the folk who couldn't leave when the mayor of Tampa said that anybody, all persons left in Tampa who will not leave are going to die. That was the death decree by the mayor. If it's this serious, I'm just saying, if it's this serious, show enough serious, then we ought to have a response that facilitates movement in hotels that are attainable in price. And we've just got to look at evacuation from a different level. And I know it's not our role as state government, but if we're serious about storms, it also lifts up again that our emergency evacuation road is Highway 319, Crawfville Road. And it's, it's a project that just seems not to be able to get a starting date. And this moment underscores, it underscores that all people leaving coastal areas coming up 319, they ought to have a road that is wider than a bicycle path. Appreciate the report that's been shared. I'm pondering what role Leon County will offer to those communities which maybe get, receive damages, and will we be participants in their recovery? And I didn't hear that part in the report, but I know that we will extend a hand. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Oh, I missed one thing, Madam Chair. I missed one more thing.
Okay.
I believe in our retreat, I'm asking, in our retreat in January, once we get past hurricane season, that we take a deep dive into our tree policy, tree policy in trees. And I could go on on that, and I know we feel differently about trees. But trees become dangerous when they old, rotten, and we're just sitting there talking about tree, tree, tree. But I believe that this moment, these weekly storms compel a serious look at trees, our power, their impact on infrastructure, as well as buildings and so forth. So I wanted to ask a review of tree policy at our retreat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Is that something, Mr. County Administrator, you can add, or do we need to?
It's generally something that we would seek board direction to add to your retreat.
Oh, okay. So we're doing commission time, we can entertain motions to do that?
Anytime the chair deems appropriate.
Do you want to do a motion then for that to be?
I'd like to offer the motion for our January retreat that we would review our trees, in particular, in light, and as they correlate to storm and preventing damage, increasing the safety of travel and those things for January. That's my motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Commissioner Mattis, are you there?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So it passed unanimously. Are you okay, Mr. County Administrator?
Got it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Any other comments? Commissioner Cabana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I would like to give a very sincere thank you to the county administrator, Kevin Peters, Matt Cavell, I know, and you, Madam Chair, I know that you all had some very long nights. I saw pictures of you in the late nights at the EOC, Madam Chair. And I know that the storm did not give much, much preparation time. I know there's a lot of sacrifice that comes into making sure that our constituents are taken care of. So thank you all, the staff members, for the efforts. I would, I would like to ask Director Peters a question, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair. Director, what, what were the top speed, wind speed and gusts from Hurricane Helene as it entered in the Panhandle? Not here, but in the, its most, I guess, prominent point?
So the National Hurricane Center has estimated it was 140 miles per hour at landfall. That would have been on the Taylor County coast. There is no weather gauge that was able to actually record an actual measurement. That's, that's an estimate from Hurricane Hunter aircraft that were flying through the storm as it was making its approach to the coast.
Thank you. What would that, you know, going into Wednesday evening, the eye of the storm was projected to go over Lake Tauplin in west Leon County. From the maps that I saw, I know it could be a little bit different. What would 140 mile-per-hour wind speed do to mobile homes in Leon County?
So FEMA advises that hurricane, or mobile homes are not safe in any level of hurricane. So that would start at 74 miles per hour. That's a recommendation from FEMA that mobile homes are not safe in any level of hurricane wind.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, my, you know, my, my feeling towards Hurricane Helene is first that we were, you know, it sounds bad to say this, that we were blessed, right? That hurricane would have had catastrophic damages, as we've heard from staff, to our community. You know, I hate saying that we, we wanted to go somewhere else because, you know, someone else embraces that, that damage and that catastrophe, as we saw just east of us. My fear is this, I vocalized this in our storm preparation meeting that we had, but southern Leon County, Woodville, is only 13 miles from the coast of St. Mark's. 13 miles. And I think sometimes we forget about that because where we all, you know, live inland. If that hurricane would have hit directly to Leon County, the southern part of Leon County with no question would be gone. We're talking thousands of folks in southwestern Leon County that live in mobile homes. And Commissioner Proctor, what you said just a minute ago about the mayor of Tampa, you know, with folks not being able to leave, that happened in our own backyard with this storm. I visited the Fort Braden Shelter, it only had roughly 65 to 70 evacuees, from my understanding. That is a very, very small percent of folks that live in mobile homes in our community in the southern part of Leon County and western part of Leon County. Now granted, I'm sure some of those folks left and didn't have to come to a shelter. But the point I'm trying to make that is that Woodville, the southern point of Leon County, does not have a storm shelter. And so it is a very low-income population, and some of those folks don't have the means to travel 15 to 20 minutes north of there to Rickards High School, where the next, nearest storm shelter was. And so I just think that it's a, it's a vulnerable, it's a part of our community that's vulnerable and susceptible to increased damage when there's a hurricane or natural disaster. As we saw with the tornadoes, Woodville was damaged significantly, and there are still people that can't go back to their homes due to that damage. And that was, I believe, roughly 80 to 100 mile-per-hour winds. So Madam Chair, I've been working with the county administrator behind the scenes and talking to him about a plan that I would like to have, and I think we're at the point where it needs staff direction to kind of invest a little bit of time in it. I don't think that this takes, I don't think that this takes any, it doesn't have any fiscal impact, I believe, because I want to direct staff to do it in-house first. But I would like to make a motion to direct staff to do a cost and feasibility study in-house to look at areas for a storm shelter in southern Leon County.
Second?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Commissioner Cabana. I just want to, I strongly support this. It's a concern we have over in eastern Leon County as well. Luckily there, we usually have Lincoln High School, which is pretty nearby. So I absolutely understand and think that it would be ideal and necessary to have that for your community.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to state here that there's a lot of federal land in Woodville. And if we were to move forward with building such facility, I strongly believe that FEMA can be an agency in those federal lands to put an emergency shelter for storms for citizens of the United States who reside in Leon County. And I'd like for the scope of the inquiry by staff to be inclusive of, of that quest and our making a foray into the thought of federal lands unoccupied being made available for emergency situations and buildings to house the citizenry of our country, if that's okay with you as maker of motion.
I want to, can we have staff just do it first before we have them look at the federal lands? And if that's a recommendation from staff to use federal lands, if that is the only land they find acceptable, then have them bring that back to us?
Well, you know, our staff was talking to the President of the United-
Well, let me ask County Administrator, could that be part, or do we need to amend the motion to include that, or would you rather bifurcate it?
It would be whatever the, oh, sorry. It would be just whatever the direction of the board is in terms of your preference.
So why don't you just amend the motion to add that they also look at that as well? Let that be part of?
Madam Chair, I don't want to add the federal land specifically.
Oh, you don't want to add it to?
No, ma'am. But I just want to let them just do their evaluation and look at where they find feasible. I know there is land that the county already owns at the Woodville Community Center area. And Madam Chair, I forgot one point, if I may, real quick. One thing that could be unique about this storm shelter is that I think there's an opportunity to maybe get some investment from the state and also from Waculla County. You know, Waculla County evacuated, and a lot of folks in Waculla County came to our shelters in northern, in Leon County. And so with the proximity from Woodville to Waculla County, there might be some opportunity to get some investment from the state, if not Waculla County themselves. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cabana?
We have a motion on the floor to ask staff to bring back an agenda item to look at a storm shelter in southern Leon County, Waculla, I mean, Woodville area. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposition? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. It passes. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I have a point of inquiry. I want to ask Mr. Peters, Matt, if they know. And I just have a random curiosity. When does the public begin to take seriously storm warnings? And in my mind, it starts around the 36-hour mark, 48 hours or something. People don't hear. They, people have been told since Sunday to move, to go, to scat, and they just don't listen. And it is, any studies that show, when do people get serious about hearing?
I do not know of studies that kind of show that human response to the message that has come out. I do know that watches, by their definition, they come out 48 hours in advance of the expected tropical weather event, and then the warnings are typically 36 hours in advance. So I know those facts, but I can check. There's a hurricane evacuation study that's conducted by the state of Florida on a, it's not a set periodic update, but they do frequent updates. And I can talk with the hurricane planning team up there and grab, I think they do some of that behavioral analysis. I just don't have that at my fingertips, and I wasn't prepared for that answer today, sorry. But there is a study, and we can, we can bring some information back and make sure it gets to you.
And the mystery of that for me is my daughter, she didn't hear me, she didn't hear mama, she didn't hear, she didn't get serious today. No.
It probably varies by individual-
And age, I guess.
It's just age, absolutely.
I get it. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your, for your comments. And thanks again to all of our emergency response team at Mr. Peters, County Administrator. I mean, just an enormous amount of staff. If you, if you're in that emergency management building on- If you're in that emergency management building on Eastwood Drive, I mean, it's hundreds of staff people there, working around the clock to make sure we have up-to-date information and that our citizens are safe and that they heed the warnings. And I just, I can't say enough, as county administrator, my hat just goes out. I know a county administrator was overnight there. I mean, we just don't know until you're in there, the enormity of time and sacrifice they leave their families to make sure the greater public is safe. So, I just thank all of you. Can't thank you enough. Okay, Mr. County Administrator, we are on consent. Are there any items?
Madam Chair, just before we get there, citizens to be heard on consent. We do have one speaker in attendance, Michael McBride.
Good afternoon. Things are happening here in Tallahassee and I want to make sure you, our community leaders, are aware of them. As I brought to this commission's attention some months ago, Connection First is doing great things to make a difference using restorative justice. This coming Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., they're hosting a restorative justice forum. I would specifically like to invite you each to attend this forum so you can discover how the process works to make that difference. And more importantly, I'd like you to be there to show leader support for this amazing effort. There's a brochure on your desk that shows the details and there's a registration code on it. Additionally, Connection First is striving to make a societal difference. They partner with Lemoine Arts and Dr. David Gussit from FSU Art Therapy to bring to town the exhibit Connections Within and Without. This is an exhibition of works created by the men at Madison Correctional Institute, the art program there, an exhibit that demonstrates how betterment programs for those who are incarcerated can be transformative and can benefit the overall society. The exhibit opening, there's a brochure on that one, too. The exhibit opening is Tuesday, October 22nd, but it is the panel discussion on Saturday, October 26th, from 11:00 to 12:30, that I would like to specifically bring to your attention. This panel will provide the opportunity to hear from the people who are making the difference. Here, too, your presence would show that the leaders support these efforts. Lastly, I worked with Target Print and Mail on these flyers. When I picked them up, they said there was no charge. This demonstrates how local business supports these efforts. But more importantly, this soundly shows that community leadership is a verb, an action verb. Please follow their example and lead with action and your presence. I hope to see you there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. McBride.
Madam Chair, we have one more speaker just in, Stanley Sims.
Mrs. Sims.
Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. It's been a very exciting day. It's barber day, so I decided to just do a little cut shot. I don't know if you are aware, but whenever I latch on to something, I don't let it go I am very concerned for two reasons about the safety of our homeless population on Pensacola Street, South Monroe, downtown. Because of this new law, you can't even fall asleep on the sidewalk. I do not want this issue painted in the wrong light. Y'all know me, I'm extra. So, don't take it the wrong way. But this issue with homelessness should be done with proper, like we dealing with American citizens. These are not immigrants. These are not refugees that's being bussed. And when I hear that homeless people from Gaston County, where I was born, yeah, it's personal. And they're coming here because they need a shelter, I don't have a problem with that because they don't have a homeless shelter in Gaston County. And when I look at the numerous cars that drive in that keep my taxes low, I need to look, we need to look at that. Now, I've called a lot of you all. Some of y'all didn't call me back. Some of you did. And I'm going to tell you, some of y'all that didn't call me back, I didn't expect you to call me back because this ain't an area that grabs your attention. It wasn't big developers, it wasn't big businessmen. These were everyday American citizens struggling, which you are entitled to help as well. You're not just here for corporate, for business partners and to deal with homeless when it's convenient for you. Because it ain't never convenient for them walking that street. There are no public safety on Pensacola Street, they're flying up and down that road. Those people have mental disabilities. They are people. And not only are they people, they are American citizens. And that need to be saved. They are not immigrants, they are not refugees.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. One more speaker, Jennifer Bay. She's in attendance? Thank you.
I just actually called the telephone.
Okay. Great. Well, now would be the time.
Now?
Yes.
Hi, Jennifer Bay, 2000 Donegal Lane. I also have a business at 7511 Silver Lake Road. So, we were talking on, I thought we were going to come up after they did the status report. So, I just wanted to thank everyone for having the staff members that did the status report for us. Based on the staff, we've gotten a copy of it. So, based on that, they do show that the fees that we submitted last month to you guys were in line with Lake County's charges that they were charging in 2018, Johns County in 2015, and St. Lucie County in 2018 and 19. So, September 30th, as you know, minimum wage went up in the state of Florida. We have, right now, our property taxes will be due next month. And then we also have to do our renewal for the rotations in Leon County this month. So, I know we were told that it would probably have to come back, but what we're asking is that once you guys hear that status report, that you will go ahead and agree to come back, take what we submitted last month, because the rates are in line, and go ahead and do that, that the next meeting would be just the public hearing so that we can try to get those rates to go into effect November, instead of waiting two or three more meetings to do that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bay. That's our last public. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Before we move on, Commissioners, to the consent agenda, I see our great public defender, Ms. Jessica Yearley, is in the audience. So, we recognize her. Thank you for your presence.
I was saying, comment when we do the jail needs assessment, please.
The next item. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator, are there any items pulled from consent?
There are no items pulled from consent.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the consent on the agenda as. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Maddox? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this item seeks your acceptance of the Leon County Detention Facility Needs Assessment Final Report, which provides an analysis and recommendations to effectively manage the population of the detention facility over the next 25 years. Before I hand it off to Shinkton, who will introduce the consultants that develop the report and make them available for a brief presentation, I want to remind the board that following your 2022 workshop on the detention facility, the board approved funding and provided the direction for us to retain the services of a consultant, which went out and was procured through a nationally advertised solicitation to evaluate and develop forecasts for the future population of the detention facility, to review current management strategies, and to provide recommendations on the need for, any need to expand the detention facility. These recommendations are all detailed in the report before you, Commissioners, and that will be presented to you in just a moment. County staff and the consultants will be available and happy to answer any questions you might have. We do have two speaker cards on this item. With that, Madam Chair, I will hand it off to Shinkton.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am pleased to introduce this afternoon Alan Richardson and Patrick Jablonsky with Justice Planners, which developed the report before you today. Alan and Patrick have more than 30 years of experience in analyzing the needs of approximately 75 jails and criminal justice facilities throughout the nation, including Orange and Miami-Dade Counties. But I believe they'll share with you that we were the best clients that they've had ever. This afternoon, they will provide a presentation that highlights the stakeholders they engaged and the steps they took to prepare the report. They'll then detail the data and forecasts in the report. And finally, they'll touch on the recommendations that have been developed to ensure the continued effective management of the population at the Leon County Detention Center. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Alan Richardson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for the time to speak for you this afternoon. I would just like to start off to say that Shinkton and Theresa have been the very best clients we've ever had before. Did I get that right? Okay. There are 1,246 beds currently at the Leon County Detention Facility, not counting the annex, which is currently offline. With those 1,246 beds, really for the past couple of decades, on any given day, you've averaged well over 1,000 inmates in there. So, operationally, you've been full. Late 2021, that average daily population rose to approximately 1,200, which is just about maxing out the total number of beds that you have. And that's what really has led to you asking for this study, for us coming on site. We were on-site back in June of last year, 2023, to kick this project off. And really, the purpose of this is to really collect a lot of data, talk to a lot of local stakeholders here to determine the future criminal justice population and the spaces that are needed to be able to accommodate them, like Shinkton said, over the next 25 years. And with the goal of giving you a lot of information so that you can make informed decisions about what direction the county needs to take in regards to not just the detention facility, but the local criminal justice system as a whole. Like I said, back in June of last year, we were on-site for several days. This is a listing of some of the different stakeholders that we met with personally. We collected an awful lot of data to be able to do these population projections, but taking the time to meet with these stakeholders gives kind of color commentary to the data to find out their views, their roles in the local criminal justice system, and how it impacts the population, the number of people going to jail, how long they stay in jail, which is going to drive the future needs there. So, that's just kind of the setup of what prompted this study in the first place, the various folks and individuals that we talked with whenever we're here. At this point, I'd like to give it to Dr. Jablonsky to talk about the data analysis that we did. Patrick?
Good afternoon. It's an honor to be in Leon County. I lived here 32 years ago when I got my master's at Florida State University. I walked around campus this morning and was utterly stunned. It's awesome to be back. Shinkton got one thing exactly right about the nature of our engagement with Leon County. When you engage Justice Planners, the first thing that we do is we give you a data request so that I can perform a number of analyses on the data. It's a three-page, single-spaced request. I'm guessing probably carries 120, 130 items to it. I've done 75 of these projects. Leon County is the only place with whom we have worked that have given us absolutely everything that we asked for. The staff here is wonderful to work with. I wish everybody had that level of engagement and response that we got here. That said, let's jump into the analysis. As Alan alluded to, the population of the jail, the detention facility, went up in '21 and '22. And so, you have a trend chart here that really, I want to call your attention to a couple of things. The chart starts in January of 2009. You can see by my dotted trend line here that there was a general increase over time for about 10 to 11 years. Obviously, the COVID-19 pandemic had a major impact on the population, but then the population recovered, such that by 2022, there were over 1,200 detainees held on a daily basis. Now, since that time, the population has dropped significantly. As of June of this year, the population actually went below 900 detainees. And we'll look at some of the reasons why that is the case. Some of that population growth since June is seasonal and normal. A lot of large jails in the United States have larger populations in August, September, and October than they would in January and December. And so, we're seeing some of that seasonality currently with the Leon County Detention Facility. I will also point out that thanks to the responsiveness of Leon County staff, some of the graphs that you're about to see go through last Monday, previous Monday, as we tried to get you as up-to-date information as possible. So, that's the population trend. And really, to understand the population, it boils down to two main facts. First of all, the number of individuals coming to the facility, what we call bookings, and average length of stay, which you will see on a lot of our slides abbreviated as ALOS. Average length of stay is something that we calculate based on how long everybody in a given month or year actually stayed. It's just the simple average of everybody who was released. And so, we'll step through that at the appropriate time. So, our first factor of the population is the number of individuals coming to the Leon County Detention Facility bookings. You can see on the left side of the chart, from 2018, from 2016 through the start of the pandemic's first wave, that we have really, despite some variation from month to month and seasons, the number of daily individuals coming was about 27, 28. And then, obviously, the pandemic and some of the events of the summer of 2020 impacted the number of individuals coming to the facility. Again, this is something that we see across the country. Just about everywhere that we've had the honor of working, the number of individuals being booked into a county's facility dropped significantly during 2020. What sets apart the various counties is what happens after the first waves of the pandemic. And so, what we see here is a bounce back of bookings in '21 and up to '22. But you'll notice that it's not at the same level it was on a pre-pandemic basis. When we used to average, say, 28, the average now hovers around 23. So, we're still not back in Leon County, back to the pre-pandemic levels. However, there is a gradual small increase in the number of individuals being committed to the facility on a daily basis. My three bullets at the bottom right, I think, show you that- My three bullets at the bottom right, I think, show you that incremental increase. It was 22.7 two years ago. Last year, it was 23. And as of last Monday, 2024 year-to-date, the number of individuals is 23.4. So we're seeing a gradual increase in the numbers of people coming in. Now, the other side of the population equation is determined by how long these individuals stay in custody. That's ALLOS, average length of stay. Longer stays generally equate to more people in the population. Again, it depends on how many people are coming into the facility. And we see prior to the pandemic, the average length of stay for the Leon County Detention Facility is more or less 40 days for individuals being released in any given month. Each little spike or valley on this graph is an average of the individuals released during these months. As we have seen across the country, the average length of stay for the facility goes up on a post-pandemic basis. You can see that it peaks at certain times of the year, and then it drops at other times of the year. Again, it's that seasonality that I talked about a few minutes ago. One of the key things to understanding the Leon County Detention Facility's population, however, since that peak of 2022, is that average length of stay has dropped significantly in the county. In fact, this year, year-to-date, it's down by a fifth. And the September average length of stay is the lowest that we've had since 2018. In September of 2023, the Leon County Detention Facility booked 32 fewer people than this year, but the population was 76 people higher a year ago. And the whole reason for that is the average length of time that individuals are staying is lower than it was before. Now, one of the things that we do when we look at jail populations and try to forecast forward is that we have to acknowledge what it is not possible for us to do. I use a hurricane analogy. I used to live and work in Orange County, Florida, and in 2004, we had three hurricanes come across my house there. It's Charlie, Francis, and Jean, and we have a tracking map here of Hurricane Jean. I use this everywhere we work for one key reason. The weather forecasters who told us initially that the hurricane was going to hit us didn't see an upper-level trough in the atmosphere coming. They couldn't possibly know that that was the case. And the hurricane does a circle in the ocean, and then it comes ashore about a week later than what they had planned. Essentially, the lesson here is this: Forecasters are only as good as what they know at the time they made the forecast. And so where it impacts our discussion today is that changes in public policy, changes in laws, staffing, another pandemic, certainly impact our ability to forecast forward. It boils down to this, particularly in the state of Florida, is I cannot tell you what the legislative session in 2029 will do, or 2034. And so our assumption is that everything that is in place when we made the forecast stays in place from a societal and public policy perspective. That said, we look at our main forecast after we consider one, the number of citizens in the county is growing significantly. The chart here has, the bottom of the chart starts at 165,000 citizens, and it goes up through the end of 2049. Since 2009, the population of the county as a whole is up 9%. What we do with our mathematical modeling is that we look at the population of adults in the county, because that is what's predictive of who eventually comes to jail, to an extent. And in that case, the population is expected to grow by 10%. Your overall population is expected to grow by 16%. However, that includes children. It includes senior citizens that rarely come to the detention facility. So we look at the projected adult population of the county, it's expected to go up by 10%. The other thing is the facility holds individuals from surrounding counties. In other words, somebody comes up from Waukulla County and they get arrested here, they serve their time here in Leon County. And so we have to look, to an extent, of the rate of growth from your bordering counties. And so essentially, the growth typically, over time, drives increases in bookings. And so when we build mathematical models, we look at how growth of a population might impact arrests and bookings. And we also look at criminal court case processing and how that impacts how long individuals stay in custody. When we know all those variables, we build a variety of mathematical models with the intent of predicting what the future of the jail's population will do over time. And so we build thousands of predictive models, and we select what the best performing one is diagnostically, and that is this. The blue line is our main forecast. It looks like a heart monitor, because in the certain times of the year, the population goes up, and in certain times of the year, the population goes down. On the left side of the chart is the actual population of the jail. It's abbreviated as ADP. It's the average daily population, and it's identical to the very first chart that I showed you, starting out at over 1,000 detainees. It drops during COVID. It peaks in 2022, and then it bottoms out before a slight rebound in the past month and a half to two months. Going forward, we project a slight moderate increase of the population going forward. The gray line, that's kind of flat, that is a little bit more prominent than the gridlines of the chart, is the actual capacity, the bed count of the facility. And so our forecast looks at the bookings, the average length of stay, the county adult population, the prior history of the detention facility's population, and average lengths of stay going forward. Bottom line is that we project, with no other changes in society or public policy, an average daily population in 2048 of just shy of 1,200 detainees on a daily basis. Now, that's the number of individuals held on a daily basis. To understand what the reality is for holding those people safely and securely, we have to take that average daily count. We have to add two factors to that. The first one is what we would call a peaking factor. Essentially, we have to remember that my numbers are, in fact, averages. They vary on a day-to-day basis. You might recall that I mentioned the population typically goes up in September and October, and it drops in January and February. There is also days of the week that are heavier in terms of traffic and population to a facility. And so we have to take that into account. You think about it. If you only build to the average number, if you were to build a facility that holds 1,194, there's heavy days that you would not be able to operate safely and securely. So you need that cushion to absorb those days when you're above average. We built mathematical models that looked at what the peaking factor is for males and females. You can see it's about 12% for females, about 6% for males. That's one factor that needs to be added to our average number to understand what the bed needs are. The second factor is what we call a classification factor, or we could also call it an operational factor. Basically, there's a couple of components to this. You need to keep certain segments of the population away from each other: co-defendants, rival gang members, known enemies, individuals who are classified with wildly different current offenses and criminal histories. In other words, a individual has never been arrested but has been detained on, say, a DUI versus somebody who has a very violent criminal history. You don't want to house those individuals together, and so you need internal capacity to keep those populations separate from each other. That's what we call a classification factor. In this case, we use a rule of thumb of 15%. So basically, it boils down to this: You add those two factors, the male classification factor, the female classification factor, and our classification factor in to get to the bed count. A final note about our classification factor: From time to time, especially with an aging facility, there are times you have to shut down a housing unit to conduct maintenance. And so you need capacity to shift components of the population around so that you can conduct maintenance and repairs to housing units within the facility. So to get from people to beds, we have this table. Big potential for confusing everybody in the room with this. So let's step through the first line here. For females, in 2028, our best forecast model indicates an average daily population of 152. That's that upper-left cell. The peaking factor for females is another 18. So we start with people, 152. To absorb the peaking requirement, you would need 18. To absorb the classification, the operational requirement, you would need 23, and that gets you to a bed need of 192. We do the same exact thing with males, starting with an average daily population of 979. We add the peaking, we add the classification, we get to a bed need of 1187. The total average daily population that we forecast in 2028, all things being equal, is 1131, getting us to a total bed need of 1379. You drop to the bottom line of the table, you can see a quarter century out, the average daily population of our best forecast model indicates 1194 in terms of the people on an average daily basis, but the actual number of beds that you need to house those individuals safely and securely is 1,456. Now, that's our main forecast. There's a couple of things that can defeat this forecast that we tried to look into and be prepared for. So we have a couple alternate forecast scenarios to explore. The first alternate forecast scenario assumes that the criminal justice system can achieve an average length of stay of 30 days. Now, you think about it, when we talked about average length of stay about six slides ago, I informed you that the average length of stay for September of this year was just a shade over 30 days. So this is, while it is a bold goal, it is certainly achievable by the system. If you can get the average length of stay down to 30 days from its current annual number of 42 days, you blunt the increase that our main forecast here, graphed in blue, would indicate. In this case, our new forecast, our alternate, is a green forecast. It basically says you reduce the average length of stay, and you hold bookings at the levels that were detected last year. The 2048 average daily population now drops to 926. The bed need is 1129. There is the table that gives you the math behind that. I won't step through that again, but you can see what my logic is here. The next forecast model that we have assumes that average length of stay is dropped to 30 days. But in this case, what happens if jail admissions return to where they were on a pre-pandemic basis? Keep in mind, you're at 23 per day now. If you go back to 2019, you're looking at six different individuals coming to jail, which is about a 25% increase, right? So that means more individuals coming, and so your population is going to be under pressure to grow. Mathematically, we phased that increase in across four years. The bottom line a quarter century out is the average daily population would be 1060. The beds needed is just shy of 1,300. You can see our blue line is touching the gray capacity line, the current capacity line, but this new alternate forecast too, the red line, stays well below those levels. There's our table with the bed need showing you our math and logic. Finally, our third alternate forecast basically looks at our final combination between bookings going up or down and average length of stay going up or down. In this case, if you take the average length of stay that the system had back in 2023, up at 53 days, you're currently at 42, but you're going lower right now, and jail admissions return to where they were pre-pandemic, you can see our orange line is well above the capacity, and in many ways, it looks like a worst-case scenario for the county. Again, we phased in the math across four years for this to occur. The average daily population a quarter century from now is at 1,679. When you do the math for the bed need, you would need 2,047 beds to accommodate these individuals. That's assuming, again, that bookings revert to where they were on a pre-pandemic basis, and average length of stay reverts to where it was last year. So we have our main forecast model based on the best-performing diagnostics that we had, given really thousands of simulations of the variables for the future, and we have our three alternates. And you can see the various varieties here for the main forecast and the alternates. Now, in all the data that Leon County staff provided us, because they gave us so much data, we could do a whole ton of analyses with the data to try to figure out, are there any opportunities for efficiencies that the county and the criminal justice partners could entertain? Our report forwards 11 recommendations and 21 actions that the criminal justice system can take to further manage and reduce average length of stay, and as a consequence, manage and reduce the population of the detention facility. Among them, one of the things that I feel strongly about, of course, I am a data nerd, so of course I will talk about this, is that expanding the population data reporting that identifies individuals who can be appropriate candidates for release and forwarding those names and information and their charge and case status to the key stakeholders, I think, is a best practice that can be taken care of for almost no dollars, that could be automated, and a variety of jurisdictions have done that. Continuing the use of the very fine SPTR program, the Pretrial Release Program in Leon County, I think is also a great idea. One specific example that we found is reducing the time of processing for individuals who are held on a violation of probation, using some of the practices that, for instance, Orange County tried about 20 years ago, I think would be an excellent idea for the stakeholders in Leon County to do as well. Establishing case processing benchmarks and monitoring progress regarding those, I think, is a standard best practice that a lot of jurisdictions across the country do. I would point out Camden, New Jersey, for one, runs a very efficient court system where all the individuals, all the parties, monitor the progress and the performance of the courts in terms of processing cases through the system. Several conclusions and key takeaways from our data analysis. First of all, the criminal justice system here has done an excellent job of managing the facility's population through a wide variety of strategies. One of the things that excited me when we started working with Leon County is knowing that Leon County did a variety of things already, and it was great to evaluate those. For a county this size to have a PTR program and to have a variety of the other strategies that are looked at is amazing. And honestly, I wish more counties were this forward-thinking in terms of how they approach the criminal justice system. The other conclusion is this, and I think it's great food for thought: Despite an increase in bookings, your population's gone down. Average length of stay has dropped, and really, as court case processing improves coming out of the pandemic, we see the pressure upon the jail population has lessened significantly in the last two years. Essentially, if average length of stay currently was back where it was two years ago, your current population would be 1,265, about 300 higher than it is now. So the system has done an excellent job managing the population of the facility. I think kind of the crisis expectation that gave rise to us eventually being hired and standing before you today, the system got in front of and did a variety of good things despite the fact that more individuals were coming to custody. Keeping that up and furthering the reductions in average length of stay and case processing efficiency, I think, will help keep the population within the capacity of the facility. I'll turn it over to Shinkton.
Commissioners, I'll just close by sharing that, as you'll see in your agenda item, the recommendation is to accept the report, and what we'll do as staff is working with our stakeholders. Many of the recommendations that Patrick mentioned really focus on our criminal case processing, making recommendations, implementations in that area, and working with our stakeholders, like the public defender, the state attorney, through our PSCC, to implement those recommendations. And then what we would also provide, as you can see, is also the option of, we provide annual updates to the board that will be provided with where we are with those recommendations, implementing those recommendations.
Madam Chair, just to wrap up the presentation real quick, I just want to thank Justice Planners for coming in. Really, what you heard here tonight, Commissioners, is very affirmational, given the programs that we've put in place over the years. Commissioner Proctor can tell you, in the mid-1990s and the early 2000s, we talked a lot about this issue, probably, we did so very frequently. And during that time, we put scores of programs in place, the programs that we have in place today that were referenced. And Justice Planners have given us new challenges and new strategies to put in place here in coordination with our PSCC and our judicial officers. And so I just wanted to thank them for that. Needless to say, all of this is enormously consequential when it comes to community safety and county operations and budgeting, needless to say. But with that, Commissioners, before we go to questions and I hand it back to the chair, we do have two speakers to be heard: Our public defender, Jessica Yury, to be followed by Connor Bassett.
Thank you, Commissioners. It was an absolute pleasure to work with you all in getting this data, and they did afford us the opportunity to let them know truly what was happening in the criminal legal system and in our courts, and how that was affecting. in the criminal legal system and in our courts and how that was affecting our jail population. Two things, I'm going to take this as a moment to truly champion the work of my office and the lawyers in my office. We are speaking to clients immediately upon arrest. We are filing motions for bond reductions for pre-trial release to try and get them out of custody. We are litigating strongly for mental health resources and alternatives to incarceration instead of just pleading everybody out immediately. So, I'm very, very proud of my office and the lawyers and our social workers and legal staff who are helping behind the scenes. I ran the number before I came upstairs. This, today is at 971 people in the Leon County jail, so we have brought that number down significantly. Some things I want to remind the Commission about, first and foremost, when we talk about managing jail population, we have to remember this is people, our neighbors, mothers and daughters, fathers and sons, who are incarcerated. And so, I think it's important to look at the data, and I think that's a critical part of the work, but it's more importantly, in my view, to look at the systemic issues, the community issues that are happening, that are causing folks to come entangled into the criminal legal system, and I think that's important to remember. First and foremost, we have to continue to support mental health resources. One of the biggest revolving door that we see in jail population is people who are suffering mental health crisis. I am grateful for the support of Appalachia Center and for the continued funding for them to do the great work that they do, but I'm coming to you telling you we need more. Oftentimes, people, you all see the booking reports every day, it's people that are coming in who are gravely mentally ill with the same trespassing charges. We need long-term, safe residential mental health facilities for people to live in. That also brings me to my next point, which is affordable housing and homelessness. Unfortunately, we continue to see the criminalization of poverty in that way, being arrests for trespass, arrests for people that are panhandling or are alleged to be, you know, standing on street corners. So, we need to continue to work to strengthen not only our emergency homeless shelters, but also our plans for long-term residential. One thing also that was important is the, the report highlighted alternatives to incarceration to include supervised pre-trial release, but also the diversion programs. One of those programs specifically is the post-arrest diversion program, which is ran by the state attorney's office, and I wanted to let you all know, something that I see would absolutely be a deterrent to the progress that we're making and something that could actually increase jail population, population, is recently the state attorney, Jack Campbell, increased the fee for diversion. So, misdemeanor diversion free has now gone up to $250, and on felony cases, it's now gone up to $500. So, I see that as a strong deterrent for people that are entering the criminal legal system, I'm sorry, a strong barrier for people that are entering the criminal legal system that have an opportunity to get out of it with diversion when those fees are now, I worry, very much going to be cost prohibitive and something that we're already seeing impacting our clients' ability to enter into the diversion program. Lastly, I also just wanted to echo and support the reentry resources that we're seeing in our community. I would continue to encourage our local business owners and your constituents in the community to hire people that may have a felony conviction on their record to give those people coming out of jail a second chance at employment, because we know employment and safe housing is going to absolutely continue to decrease crime and increase our public safety. That's all I have. It was a pleasure to work with them, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Or sit down.
Thank you.
She's open to questions. I want to ask one.
Let's wait and hear the other speaker.
Very good.
The next speaker, Connor Bassett. I believe it's a virtual speaker. Connor Bassett.
Are you there, Ms. Bassett?
We do have him on. Okay. We can come back to that, Madam Chair, if we're able to get him on the line. With that, that concludes our speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I will entertain a motion and then Commissioner Proctor, I believe you wanted to speak, and then Commissioner Minor.
I will entertain a motion to accept staff recommendation to accept the report.
Moved. So moved. Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The presentation was a little bit sterile. I did not hear functionality issues and functionality would cover, and I did not hear the word "mental health" in consultants' report at all. And with such significant amount of the population being mental health, the management of mental health integrated with the structure and the functionality of a physical space to maintaining the safety of those with different temperament, with different issues, understanding of authoritative orders, that was missing. I had hoped that this report could have shared a little bit more about the current space and our need to modify or to augment our capacities to maintain and manage the population with greater efficiency. I missed that. Secondly, with respect to how do we get the number of days down, Teresa, I don't know why to word 242, 242 days as a stay. Why does that 242 days stand out in my mind?
Yes, you sure do.
But you shared that number with us at the PSCC a lot of time. I didn't hear the numbers that I'm familiar with.
Yes, Commissioner Proctor. So, in our analysis, we were using average length of custody, which is when we take the average of everybody who's in the detention facility, how long they've been there. A better, or better means of analyzing the data is the average length of stay, which Patrick might be able to explain a little bit in more detail than I can.
I'm accustomed to like 242 days, and maybe Ms. Yearley is familiar. So, the number that is presented here is grossly unique and far off from the number that we are usually dealing with in this room.
Yes, Commissioner. So, again, we present the average length of custody. There's a different metric that we can use, a better metric, which is the average length of stay, and Patrick can explain that. After he provides that explanation, we are working to incorporate that into the PSCC report that you get. So, we're working with the OIT office to develop that report. So, from moving forward, we will be able to present the average length of stay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Yearley, Patrick, you want to weigh in on that because we're operating from two sets of metrics, and it's misleading, it's confusing.
Absolutely. And I understand, I understand perfectly why it would be confusing. Average length of custody, which you're accustomed to seeing, is if you take everybody at this moment at the Leon County detention facility and average how long all of those individuals have been held, which comes to 240, that is significantly higher than average length of stay. Average length of stay is how long everyone released during a time period actually stayed. And the reason there's such a gulf between those two numbers, if you think about it, out of 25 people who come to the detention facility today, about 13 or 14 of those individuals will be released the same day. And so, their average length of stay for those individuals will be a half a day. They, when we go and count, let's say hypothetically, we count at this very moment, we're missing the stays of all the individuals who bonded out of jail before 3 o'clock today, who had very short lengths of stay. And so, they're really apples and oranges. The best metric to judge a facility population by is the average length of stay, not the average length of custody. And that was one of the very first things that we mentioned to staff when we were on-site in summer of 2023, and I think that's a number that you will see going forward.
Does your report capture the cost of per person stay and how do we relate in terms of the cost? We're at 90, 90, almost $95 a night, and did you capture anything that could drive our costs down on a per-day stay? Cheaper food, cheaper toilet paper?
We did not look into costs. Ours was simply a population study. I think if you're looking at finances, reducing the population likely would reduce the liability the county has on a financial benefit. And one other note, if I may, there's a few pages in our report devoted to individuals with mental health issues that would say a significant component of any jail's population, and we would be really remiss if we did not include that. And so, really, the estimates that we could develop statistically is roughly half the population of the facility at any one time has a mental health issue of some kind. The public defender is exactly right on two levels regarding this population, that this population has a much higher length of stay, and so they are a very expensive population because of the levels of care and other things that are required. The second component, where the public defender was exactly right, is the recidivism rate of the mental health population is significantly higher for, than the population who do not have mental health issues. The rearrest component that she alluded to is much more pronounced for the mental health.
Did you, did you all note that in some of the pods, we have one officer per 90 detainees? And was that problematic to you? Or what is an acceptable ratio in, under national trends, regional trends? Is one officer in pod with 90 detainees acceptable, respectable? And how, if you've seen that, why is there no reporting that there ought to be some modifying of relation of 90 detainees with one little officer?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. We do address that in the report, and while we talk about the total number of beds at 1,242, 1,243 in the facility, that doesn't mean that they're necessarily appropriate beds, in our opinion. And to address exactly what you're speaking to, I believe there's six of the housing units there with capacities of 94 inmates. They were originally built with a capacity of 47, but a second bed has been added to each cell to basically double the capacity of that housing unit from 47 to 94. Now, since COVID has come along, you're holding a different classification of offender than pre-COVID. Almost all of your non-violent misdemeanances are out of jail. You're not holding those folks now, so who is left over? It's your more serious, you're more violent felony-type charges. Having 94 of those type of individuals in one housing pod is a large number to begin with. Then, with a direct supervision model of having one officer in a housing unit with up to 94 potentially violent felony offenders is a high number, and that is...
Is your report asylum officer safety?
It does.
You've spoken to that here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. On page seven of the report, I think Ms. Yearley pointed out that the state attorney is up the fee for diversion, 250 misdemeanor, 500 felony. And over on page seven, you've cited the 2023 Pew Charitable Trust study about the disproportionate number of blacks in detention facility compared to white, but it's consistent with national trends. And this is a very, very disturbing paragraph that you've, you know, a narrative that you've used is nothing that your consultant group seems to be saying in first person, but you're attempting to rationalize the over 70% black population that we have consistently at Leon County, Leon County's jail. Is there anything particularly, in your experience, compelling that if no other county in the country can change these numbers of blacks representing disproportionate, high rate of those persons detained, and in particular, you all note, is this true in local, in local jails, detention centers, a little even more so than the other facilities? Have you all noted any state-of-the-art technique, methodology, messaging that could change this trend, reduce this number, this habit? And in terms of who's bringing people to jail, arresting, have you all tracked who's arresting everybody? Did FSU bring them? FAMU PD bring them? Department of Law Enforcement, Sheriff, TPD? Who's bringing these people consistently to the jail and for what offenses? Have you, do you look into the population like that?
For Leon County, with the, with the data that we have, we do have the arresting agency for, for all individuals that came in. I don't know that, of tracking that we did with the racial breakdown by particular arresting agencies.
I'm curious if agencies, all agencies see, quote, crime as the same thing. Let's say like Commissioner Van's district or Commissioner Minor's district, you know, what is laudering? Well, maybe FAMU police see it as something different. Leon County sheriff riding by see it as something different. TPD comes by and their sensitivities about the law is, I see criminality. Some guy standing down on the corner of Monroe and Tennessee Street with a sign up, you know, "Work for Food, Hungry, Whatever, Please Donate." Some agencies may treat this as criminal conduct. Some other agencies do. Do you find that there's an equal interpretation of the law enforcement or interpretation of what's illegal, what's criminal? How do you view that? And it seems that most of them are consistent with respect to their interpretation of black criminality. These numbers in Tallahassee, they are offensive to the citizenry that pay taxes, but the interpretation of conduct of many black citizens is, there's just zero tolerance. And what's your interpretation of that? I'm not saying anything different from any sensible elected official in this nation, but what is your sense and your expertise about law enforcement being hypersensitive and perhaps knee-jerk, overreactive at times to black criminality, whatever that is?
I think those are all very good and legitimate questions that go beyond the scope of what we were contracted to look at. So far as getting into that level of law enforcement and arrest practices and interpretation as to what's a violation of law and what's not, a great study to undertake, but unfortunately, to that level of detail, that goes beyond what, what we were contracted to do in this particular study.
Okay, very good. My last question, Commissioner, I apologize. I apologize. But this is the one issue which you have year after year assigned me to, and it's just so much heart in this, and so much time, so much detail, Ms. Brockston and all of that. My final question, Commissioners, is this, before it goes another comment. Ms. Yearley, I wanted to ask, how do we get the number of days down? That was the question presented by a consultant. And from my understanding, the plea offers, if we had more tolerable, reasonable pleas, then the rate of folk leaving, Madam Chair, are accepting the offer from the state. But when people are locked up and saying, "I ain't accepting that," and they would prefer to stay locked up than to accept a plea agreement that even to them is tortuous and not worth the risk of taking, there's a problem. Ms. Yearley, is there something you could speak on? Because in my observation over the years, the breakdown in this county and what's clogging up and what could greatly assist the courts... up and what could greatly assist the courts is you all reaching far more plea deals. And I respect the force with which you have protected, and nobody in this community has a greater legal clientele at Leon County Detention than you. You've got the largest clientele than anybody in town. But help us to understand a little bit for the Commissioners to know what's clogging the system and keeping folk in jail for 242 days.
Sure. I think that one of the biggest issues is mental health, and I wholeheartedly see a revolving door of the continued arrest and prosecution of people who are gravely mentally ill. If we stopped doing that, then that would help bring jail population down. To answer your question specifically about plea offers, the state attorney's office is the one that brings a plea offer. Sometimes we can suggest what our client may do. Oftentimes, we say, you know, hey, client would agree to this, or could we do this? But when plea offers come back that not only create significant harsh sentences of jail and prison, convict our clients and put felony convictions on them, which is a huge barrier to any successful, you know, employment, housing, life after a conviction. But also, when we see oftentimes clients that will take a plea because they can't afford their bond, or they, you know, can't get out right away, will take a plea to something they didn't do because it's the easiest way to get out of jail. And so we try very hard not to do that. The solutions are continue to litigate pretrial motions, so to file motions to reduce bond, to file our motions for pretrial, is to get people out pretrial. Because remember, Commissioners, that's what the jail is. The jail is a pretrial incarceration setting. So the vast majority of folks in the Leon County Jail have not been convicted of anything and are sitting there waiting their next court date. So from our perspective, we litigate those issues pretrial. What the state brings to us as plea offers and what we're able to negotiate with them is different. I think it's having more alternatives to incarceration would assist, but we wholeheartedly aren't going to agree to sign up our clients for convictions for crimes they didn't do or for convictions that are significantly harsher than anything they deserve for what the charge is itself.
Right. And that, right, that Commissioners, is a difficulty, that when the plea which is offered often is more exacting of a harsher sentence, rougher than what you would get out of the court sentence. And I feel, over time, this is my final comment, I feel over time that the study that is needed probably from the Supreme Court vantage point, are the offers per, what is it, 21 circuits or something?
20, sir.
20, 20 circuits. What are the offers, circuit, circuit, circuit? What are the outcomes? That needs to be studied by the Florida Supreme Court. Then you will find a person X charged with ABC in our district, another district, another district, how was it resolved? That needs to be looked at because our public defender is doing a hell of a job, standing up for her constituents, her clients. But it's so hard when even the client just said, no, I can't do this, I'm gonna stay in jail. That's what's happened. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Brock. Commissioner Miners, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, Patrick, I want to thank you for the report. Really well done. I got my data fix today. And actually, I'm not being sarcastic. I really did. Thank you. I appreciate that. Really well done, I thought. And during the briefing with the county administrator yesterday, we got into more detail about it, too. I wanted to ask a question that would help me understand some of the findings a little bit, if you don't mind. Madam Chair, may I ask?
Absolutely.
So if we talk about ADP and we look at 2023 going up to 2048, it looks like there's a 14.6 increase in the ADP over those 25 years. But if, as you say in the report, the population of those 18 to 59 only increases to 9.9. So the rate of the ADP is increasing at a greater rate than the population. I'm sure you've got a reason for that. Can you explain it? Why, is it because the 2023 ADP level is still being impacted by the COVID from 2023, the impact? Why would the ADP increase at a higher rate than population in the same time period?
That's a great question. Historically, for this jurisdiction, as well as many other jurisdictions across the country, is that the population of the facility has outstripped the population of the county in terms of growth. And really, the reason for that, for the most part, has been the average length of stay of the facility, which again is, you know, operates independently of county growth. I think one of the challenges that Alan and I have when we go to jurisdictions is that there's a perception oftentimes of a direct linear one-for-one relationship between population growth and facility growth. And population growth is a factor, but it's not the main factor. It impacts arrests, and it may impact certain aspects of criminal justice case processing. But really, case processing and some of the issues that we just had an exchange on, I think are so important to really the outcome of any facility's population. Really, average length of stay in this county is the keys to the kingdom, I think, for staying ahead of the facility's population in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then lastly, I just, I want to thank the efforts of Ms. Yearley, our Public Defender's Office, and Jack Campbell, our State Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, and of course, everyone at the detention facility for all their work and doing the work that they've done. We've been hearing about some of the initiatives that you all are taking to reduce the numbers and try to stretch the facilities as much as we can. And so I just want to thank everybody involved in doing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Miners. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for this study. I have to say that, I believe the motion to instigate it was a little bit before my time, and when I saw it, I perceived it as a study to find out how big of a detention center we need to build. And so when I saw the item come back, and my heart tightened a little bit, and when I read the report, I was very relieved to see that that's not what we ended up with, it's not what we needed, which I greatly appreciate. And part of that is because in both discussions I've had with our state attorney about what we need to see and what we've heard today from the public defender and others is, we need mental health facilities for people. And our detention center, I believe I read, is the number one mental health provider in our area. And, you know, it's not a part of this report or this motion or anything, but if we're able to save significant capital and not build an extended detention center, perhaps we can consider a regional mental health facility that can serve long-term residents for both equality of life for them, for everyone in our detention center, or everyone in our community. So that was very good news. It looks like in only one scenario would we have a deficit, we estimate. So if we don't make changes, if we don't reduce our average length of stay through court processing and things like that, then we could have a small deficit. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. He nodded yes for the record. And so I'm hopeful, I'm looking forward to seeing that, especially when, you know, the solutions are increasing efficiency and things like that. And then finally, following up on the excellent comments and questions from Commissioner Proctor, in this report where under certain scenarios, you provide that we could possibly go to the original design of, let's just say, single-bed pods, pods with the 46 or something original detainees, under a circumstance where we successfully reduce the average length of stays, which sounds like it would be much more safe for the deputies, for the detainees. And so anyways, just thank you, and I was very relieved with the report, and I'm very hopeful that we can achieve these improvements.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Miners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually going to say the same thing Commissioner O'Keefe did. I'm interested, though, that mental health piece. I mean, because Commissioner Proctor, you spoke a lot about pleas and stuff like that. But the first thing you mentioned was the mental health piece. How far is that outpacing everything else when it comes to length of stay?
It's adding to the recidivism. It's the circle.
Recidivism, length of stay. How far is that? How much is that a factor as opposed to everything else?
Yeah, we have the average length of stay differential in our original report. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't have it memorized. I want to say it's maybe one and a half times what the average length of stay for...
And that's specifically as a result of a mental health issue?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, just got handed the report back to us.
You know what? I'll take that, that's enough.
The average length of stay is nearly twice as high as the overall average in 2022 and 2023.
Right, right, right. And so when we talk about, there's not nearly enough beds, it's not just a Leon County problem, it's not a Florida problem, it's a United States problem, right? I'm interested in knowing what innovative things are other counties and states or cities doing to address these things, because the question I've always asked myself, if you have a mental health issue, do you belong in jail? Or do you belong in a mental health facility? And how do we get you from a detention center where really it's not a mental health facility, to a mental health facility? How do we start to change the narrative around really thinking about the rights of those who have mental health issues to say, they don't belong in jail, they don't belong in detention centers, and we're doing them a disservice and injustice by keeping them there, knowing that's not the rightful place?
Commissioner, you were not wrong. And this is not a Leon County or a Florida issue. This is what we encounter literally everywhere we work across the country. And you're also not wrong that the county jail here is the largest mental health treatment facility in the area, and that's not unusual or unique either. How do we get people out to more appropriate facilities? We need more appropriate facilities built. We need to have a place to be able to divert and to deflect these folks, too. Now, you raised the question of innovative practices, and what some facilities, county jails, have done is they have, they've designed it and built and operate at least sections of it to be a more therapeutic-type environment, where you bring those mental health services in-house. Whether they're housed there full-time, that would be ideal, or whether you have an outside provider come in on a regular basis to be able to provide therapy counseling, so that when these individuals do get out, you're not letting them back out and saying, here's a card with an appointment for you to go to. It's much more of a warm handoff. You have folk, mental health professionals from the community in your facility, they already have that relationship, they already have that rapport.
Right. That's the other piece that I was going to bring out, you just hit it on the head. Our law enforcement professionals are not mental health counselors, they're not, I mean, some of them are probably trained to deal with it, but can they really adequately give the help that those folks need in those detention centers to help them get better? I don't think they're trained to do such.
I think they do a fine job, but you're correct. That's not their primary...
I think they try. They do the best they can, and I applaud them for that. But what kind of disadvantage are we putting them at by putting them in a position to have to do that when the majority of the population they're dealing with are dealing with these issues? You know what I'm saying? It's just, for me, it's a whole different, it's a bigger thing than us just looking at population. It's a specific population, the largest population, and how exactly we service them while they're in our facilities. I do like the idea, though, of, and I'm not even sure we can pull it off, but of specific wings where it's more therapeutic and the professionals in there are ready and trained to deal specifically with the issues that the mental health population that we have in our prison, our jail, is dealing with. I don't know how, you said some detention centers are doing that? Yes? And the detention centers that are doing that, what is the, how different is the, I guess, what I'm looking for? How difficult would it be, you know what? That's a question. How difficult would it be for our detention center, and I'm not at all trying to dictate to the Sheriff what he could do, what he should do, but just for me to understand, how difficult would it be for our detention center to create a pod of such, given the population that we have?
On point, on point, on point.
Hold on. Let him answer it, Commissioner Proctor. Hold on a second.
It's possible. I think it would be difficult. Again, with half a dozen housing units at double the capacity of what they were originally designed for, if you were to knock those back down to 47 beds as the 94, now you have a pretty big bed space deficit in total numbers. And so being able to set aside a pod or multiple pods to be able to do housing set aside specifically for those with special needs there would become much more difficult because now you're crunching limited real estate, limited bed space.
Right. When I was driving, I was listening to you a little bit. You talked a little bit about segregation, a little bit about, and you called it something different, but someone who has a violent past shouldn't be with someone who doesn't, right? And my mind probably works the wrong way on this, but I grew up as a kid in poverty, and one of the things that I hated, I had to change once my mom got Section 8, was when we lived in the projects, everybody was poor, right? She got Section 8, we moved into this house in the neighborhood, the house right next door. Mark and Matthew Carson, who had a mom and dad who were white kids, I befriended them, and I got a different view of what life looks like, you know? I'm guessing that that doesn't cross over when it comes to violent offenders, violent offenders and those who, well, no, it probably wouldn't. I'm talking myself out of it now. I would think that it comes in mind of temperament, not necessarily offense, when it comes to being able to be around someone who could maybe help you mature or become better or get past that violent past that you have, or deal with those traumas that you may have had that led to the violent past. I guess I'm saying is, you put all these violent offenders in the same place at the same time, but you expect them because the detention center in definition is somewhere that you go to be detained, but to also be rehabilitated, to re-enter society, right? So does it really, I guess, harm to put all violent offenders together? And what way does that help those who are really intentionally trying to be rehabilitated, to be placed back into society?
I think what you're helping is your nonviolent offenders and your weaker offenders because the classification and housing plan doesn't rely just on your current charge. It takes into account your age, your mental capacity, do you have any mental illness or not? Violent past, nonviolent past. And it doesn't have to be a razor's-edge delineation between the two. Maximum and medium can be housed together. Some minimum and medium can be housed together. It's when you jump categories, minimum and max, that bad things happen.
So...
Commissioner, let me remind you all, too, we have public hearing at 6:00.
Yes, ma'am. I'm wrapping up.
And some other commissioners.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm wrapping up. I have a family with an extensive background in detention, and so I understand it probably better than most. So when you talk about that maximum, minimum security stuff, right? I was just talking to a family member the other day, he was talking about the point system, right? So the question I have about the violent versus nonviolent, if someone, he said to me, I had two points, 15 and below, I can graduate myself from medium to minimum security, right? And he said, that's where things are a little looser for you. When it comes to working through that chain, can someone who's a violent offender work through that chain to get to minimum versus them because of their offense always being maximum?
I can't speak to the specific process here in Leon County. Broad picture, yeah, that's possible.
Okay. Madam Chair, that mental health thing really gets me. I think about, you know, the folks that we have in our community that suffer from mental health, the folks that don the homeless facility that I run, as far as, also Kearney Centers and others, who, like I said, they don't belong in detention centers. I don't know how we get there, I don't know what this conversation looks like, I don't know if it's a workshop or not, and I don't want to waste our time because maybe there's nothing we can do at this point. But I would like to know, maybe from staff, what best practices are when it comes to mental health in our detention center and how they're dealing with it, and how we can talk about... we can, we can talk about doing some different things to deal with it here in Leon County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner, I think probably you had a short comment, very short, we've got a 6 o'clock public hearing.
Commissioner Maddox, his question went to the exact question that I was asking about functionality in the space and the efficiency of the space relative to the different temperament of those who were detained, and whether or not here at Leon County's detention facility, if folk were being housed proportionately level of their queued upness and so forth. So he's talking about functionality of this space, and I somehow didn't glean a good look at that, and whether or not mental health needed to be isolated or paired with and all of that. I think that those questions may well exceed officers' training, maybe just looking at men and women, I don't know. But one thing we, Commissioner Maddox, that you strike, is the fact that the mental health population is adding to the days that when they get out, they, they recidivate, they come right back through the turnstile. But what is not disclosed is that the word treatment came up somewhere. There is treatment inside the Leon County Detention Center, and as long as you're there, you can be treated. But when you leave, you go into a helter-skelter reality, that there's no accountability for one's health and no certainty as to how you receive psychotropic medications. They're not available, there's no scale, time, you know, what time you take this, what time you take that. That's the problem, that mental health is so loosey-goosey in America, it's just like every other city in America, we just don't give a damn about mentally challenged people, that's the bottom line. So the resources of all the things, great stadiums that we have, two great football stadiums, millions of dollars, but we don't have a mid-level facility, long-term care for those persons who are suffering mental challenges, and maybe they need to join the boosters organizations or something. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor, I want to thank all of the Commissioners for your, for your comments. Thank our public defender, Jessica Yuri, for appearing with us, and of course, I'm in attorney, I've represented defendants before, and I certainly have a keen understanding of what's going on. But just one, one little provocative area that you all mentioned, that one of the, I believe the language you used was one of the prime deterrents that affects the length of stay, was the period between a person's arrest and then full adjudication of that process. But it was, and I kept reading and reading, and I thought there would be some recommendation about adding some more judges, but you found in your report that the lack of judicial attention wasn't a primary issue in the, the length of stay of the inmates, that it was other things that you mentioned in the report. Am I correct? You didn't, you didn't think that the fact that it might be, I guess, full dockets, I know sometimes you go to docket sound, and you can sit there a long time because there's a whole, you know, a whole list of, of promenades on that docket, but you didn't find that to be a deterrent, a deficiency in the overall process?
Well, Commissioner, we, we did not recommend that in the report, but that is always very helpful if the state was able to create two more divisions of court that would move, that would move for any jurisdiction, any court. We wanted to look at something that, recommendations that were more or less within the purview of the stakeholders.
Thank you. And if I can ask the public defender, just, looking at the percentage of the individuals that's following bond, Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Maddox, the number of individuals that are incarcerated, that have mental issues, I would think that the public defender, you probably have a disproportionate number of individuals with those issues that you represent out of your office.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And I think the, the two things, just to your last point, it's not necessarily more judges or more access to a courtroom, but it's the things that we're waiting on constantly to set our case for trial, we're waiting on discovery, we're waiting for the state to respond to something, we're waiting for the state to review the case, that's what's delaying things. Additionally, when we don't have those things, we can't prepare as the defense to get ready for trial, so that's an issue. But specifically to mental health, to answer your question, yes, we could stop arresting mentally ill people and putting them in jail. We can divert them to the mental health facilities, we can give them the resources they need outside of the Leon County Detention Center. And I'll tell you, the sheriff and I have had many conversations, he's doing everything he can, but his staff at the jail, the first ones calling us, saying, we can't take care of this person, they are so gravely mentally ill, can you help us resolve the case? And so criminalizing that and charging with them with a crime is not helping. So that's what my recommendation would be to you all, is to continue to fund those alternative resources.
Thank you, thank you so much, Shenton, you all, thank you all for, for the great report. We know we can't resolve all the issues tonight, but we've got foundation facts to work on, and perhaps at some point, we can workshop it. But at this moment, I would like all those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. We will now recess until 6 o'clock before our public hearing.